Okay, welcome to the work session for Thursday, March 16th for North Bend School District 13. We'll call the order. We've got 6:00 PM straight up. And let's see, we'll have the flag pledge. I see we have there. I'll start that off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Roll call for board members. I see Mary Schilling, Carol Yardley, Michelle Roberts, Steve Ryan, and Christina Simpson. Good, good. We are there. Item two, approval of the agenda.
Um, I would like to make a motion to table item five until a future date.
Okay, that is item five. There's a motion to table item five transgender communication. Is there a second?
Jim, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table item five transgender communication. All in favor of tabling say aye, and I'll go first. Aye.
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 Aye. Christina, aye?
I'm an austin.
Yes, um, I though I would like to discuss as a board what the the plan is moving forward with that because I do think that that is a discussion that we need to have. I understand preferably not having it at the meeting tonight, but I think that it's something that we need to address as a board and have further discussion over. Um, so I would like to figure out what the plan is, uh, moving forward with that.
I agree with that.
Okay. So was there, was there, uh, we had, let's see, one, two. I believe we had four, four ayes. Christina, what were you, were you and I?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But I would like there to be a agreement that we will, um, have that conversation, uh, really preferably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Um, I agree with that. I just think since we have two new board members on tonight, that it would be a good idea to let them get caught up with the correspondence and then, um, have it soon at a work session and then bring it, um, on a future agenda, not too far in the distance.
Okay, I mean, it sounds like a work, it's a work session topic, so. So for, for now, the, uh, item five has been tabled and will be discussed at a future, future work session. Uh, with respect to that, is there, well, given that, is there an approval of the agenda now with that revision?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with that tabled item.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Okay, is, okay, we have a motion to, uh, table item five. And we will come back to it at a work session and, uh, the motion is to approve the agenda with that tabled. All in favor say aye, and I'll, I'll go. We'll do roll call, uh, voting because it's a little more difficult online. Mary, what are you?
Aye.
Aye, I'm an aye. Carol? Carol's a, is that an aye? You're muted. Hey Carol, you'll need to unmute.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, aye.
Okay, three ayes. Michelle?
Aye, aye. You guys all went frozen for a minute.
Okay, so there's four ayes. Steve, Ryan? Five, and then Christina?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Excuse me, Mia. Uh, Julie cannot get into the, um, session.
Okay, has she? She should call me.
Okay.
Um, I will try resending her a link personally and perhaps she should call me too.
Okay.
Thank you, Mia. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is item three, Evergreen Virtual Academy Renewal Public Hearing, no action. Kristen Miles.
Hi, everybody. Kristen Miles from OSBA here. Thanks for having me. I actually worked with your school board quite a bit over the, over the course of the years. Um, I work with the Oregon School Boards Association. Um, what a part of what I do and what you hired me to do is, uh, facilitate the renewal process for, um, for Evergreen Virtual Academy. And so tonight, what we're doing is the required hearing under ORS 3380655C. So, um, what's required under there is that there be an opportunity for, for the public to weigh in on the renewal request. So how it's going to be structured tonight is that Eva has come prepared with about a 10-minute presentation. I know that they've lined up a couple of speakers, um, to represent a broader contingency of folks, so I know they've got a staff member, a, a family member, a student, um, maybe an alumnus, I'm not sure, but they've got a few folks come to speak to you. And then, of course, you can ask them any questions that you want. Um, that's the structure of the hearing tonight. Um, there are no decisions to be made tonight at the hearing. This fulfills that statutory requirement. Um, after the hearing, then the, um, then later, within 30 days or the, or a date agreed to, which will be April 6th, the board must then vote on statutory criteria, yeah, um, whether to renew or to not renew the charter. You'll receive a full report from me at that time, so that'll be a future step, but tonight we're just here to do the public hearing. And so, I don't know, Kevin, did you want to say anything before I hand it off to Eva? I'll hand it off to you, Kevin.
Well, that's, I think that's a great, uh, a great introduction to this, and I will, uh, formally welcome Brian Gardner, who is, uh, sitting in as executive director on behalf of Jamie Stiles. Um, Jamie is on some, uh, some leave right now, and so I'll turn it over to Brian and his team.
Well, this will be the world's shortest, uh, speech that I ever give. Uh, I've been, um, filling in for Jamie, and it's been an absolute pleasure getting to know the team. And, uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Caitlin because she has, uh, been the conductor on this project.
Thank you, Brian. Hi, directors of the board and, um, hello to the North Bend School District community. My name is Caitlin Clens and I am the middle school principal at Evergreen Virtual Academy, and it's great to see you here tonight. Just got a little bit of nerves, uh, came in all of a sudden, um, but it's, um, really a pleasure to be able to come before you and talk a little bit about our school. Um, I'd like to share my screen. Um, if that's possible, Mia, maybe you could enable me to be able to share. And we have a short presentation we hope to thrill you with this evening. Let's see, I know she's being tasked as well to maybe help somebody get in. Right. Well, while we're waiting for that ability to share screens, um, let me talk a little bit about our school. I'll begin without the ability to show the screen. Does that sound okay? Okay, Kevin's back.
Yep, I'm trying to get that to work, so hang on just a second.
Okay, no worries. This is what we do. We roll with it every day. Tech challenges all day, every day.
Try again, you should be good.
Weird room. Okay, all right, here we go. Aha. All right, can you see that? Okay?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Because the verbal communication, very important. Um, all right, um, so again, Caitlin Clens, middle school principal, Evergreen Virtual Academy enthusiast, um, excited to be here before you today. Um, a little bit about our school, you probably know some about us being chartered together, being buddied up. Um, but we were founded in 2008 and we've been always chartered through the North Bend School District. We were formerly Orva, um, and we focus on a flexible, individualized learning community. We are a place that's safe for kids to go, um, an engaging learning environment, and, um, we're here to help every student everywhere, uh, achieve their greatness that we see in them. Um, over the last few years, we have had a significant, um, twist and turn in our story. And, um, overall, uh, beside the COVID disruptions that all schools experienced, we have departed from our for-profit management company that partnered with us in the beginning in 2021. So we now are a completely independent nonprofit charter school. And, um, then this year, we also departed from their learning platform and curriculum in 2022 and changed our name to Evergreen Virtual Academy. Um, but we still remain the same school with the same staff, the same leadership, the same focused and driven supportive learning environment for kids. Um, our mission is that we will provide a safe, inclusive, and collaborative environment that values individual growth and achievement. We really believe in creating this individualized, um, environment for every student that can reach them right where they are. Um, we do, we achieve our mission through our vision and also through our core values. Our core values are that our outreach by engaging students right where they are, relationships by the, uh, growing those relationships as much as we possibly can, um, because we know that relationships are the core to a learning partnership. And validation, acknowledging all of students' unique, um, capabilities and the reasons that they come to us and achievement, um, that we believe that all students can achieve at high levels. This is our, uh, artist rendering of our leadership team, uh, so some of them you might see here tonight. Um, and overall, uh, you know, we, we use a lot of different creative mediums. Some teachers use a lot of bitmojis and other animations that really engage students. Um, but we have a, an experienced staff. We have 102 staff members. We have five licensed administrators, and we have an office and operation support staff in our lovely North Bend School District office. And, um, overall, we're just really proud of our teaching staff and how they love to be at our school, um, and our students love to have them too. Our program model, you may be wondering, but what is it like on a daily basis? Um, our program model has daily live classes for all students, so, um, we have those classes where they log in and they're seeing their teacher, physically seeing their teacher and each other, um, for actual in-person, you know, in, in-screen learning with their teacher for multiple times per day. Um, we are able to, through our flexible schedule, double-dose math, double-dose language arts and English, making sure that they are able to have exposure that they need to increase achievement in our targeted subjects. And we also focus deeply on engaging students and families and making sure that we're tracking that engagement, making sure that we're, um, reaching all of our students' needs, we're assessing their social emotional learning, we're, um, making sure that teachers are contacting students and that students are asking the questions they need. And that we also have a comprehensive three-level model. So even though we're kindergarten through 12th grade as a school, we have an elementary school with its own principal, kindergarten through 5th grade, a middle school with its own principal, me, um, 6th through 8th grade, and then we have a high school with its own principal as well, um, which is 9th through 12th grade, and it's a completely comprehensive high school with a counseling staff. We also have a lot of departments that, um, range kindergarten through 12th grade, so a lot of the departments that I didn't mention also have, um, an impact on all students. So students daily have the opportunity to have deep connections with their teachers in those live classes. And we can be really flexible and really responsive with what they tell us their learning needs are and their needs for connection. Uh, we can adapt and personalize all of the lessons and the different connections that we have with students. And, uh, some live classes and work are, uh, live in class and some are independent. So if a student misses class, they can see the recording and they can communicate with their teacher offline. Um, and they also might have homework that's in our online learning platform. We are governed by a school board, um, similar to you all, and, um, the biggest difference is that they are from across the state of Oregon. Um, some of them have come to board service through, um, wanting an opportunity to engage in an education community. Some are lovers of technology and, um, and some are parents, uh, from our parent community. And they have many of the same responsibilities that you have as well. Um, I cannot stress enough how proud I am of our school for the transition that we've gone through in the last two, three years. Um, we, uh, have had, um, minimal student transition and minimal staff transition, and we just launched a survey asking our staff their intent to return, and, um, 99% of them intend to return next year despite the transitions that we've been through. So we're really proud of the work that we've been doing. Um, we did, uh, transition our curriculum, our live class systems and our learning platform systems this year as well as our name. Um, but we know that transition is the act of, of moving from one thing to the other, and students are doing that constantly. They're going through maturation, they're maturing when they start with us, you know, they're have to sleep with the nightlight on, and when they leave us, they're ready to move out of the house. So it's just this massive time that we're, we're working with them through transition, so we know how to do that transition. I thought you might want to see a window into our learning platform, so this is what students are seeing when they log in. This is from a middle school student's view. And, um, on our learning platform, we use Canvas, which is pretty ubiquitous, um, among a lot of schools. Um, students have access to within Canvas course materials, assignments, calendars, messaging abilities, embedded tools, and their live platform classes. And parents, which we also call learning coaches because they're alongside as partners with us, um, they have access to observer accounts, uh, all student activities and communication with the teachers through that platform. This is what some of our live classes look like. Um, a couple of these are pulled from our, um, recordings of classes, and this one you can see learning objectives happening. Over here you can see some bitmojis being used in a first grade classroom, which was adorable to watch this recording. Um, and teachers are able to also embed a lot of engagement activities in all of the live classes to really get students talking and working together and responding to teachers and really doing that processing that we know makes learning come alive and cemented for students. Um, this is kind of what it might look like for a kid to be in a live class. That's not an actual class, it's a demo. That's right there. Um, a couple Eva program highlights before we, um, let you hear from someone else besides me. Um, we have a full comprehensive high school with multiple CTE pathways for high school students. Um, high school success mentors for our ninth grade students, high school dual-credit course offerings, and a robust high school credit recovery program. Oops. We have, um, across our whole school kindergarten through 12th grade, we have engaging elective options. Um, we have high-interest clubs and student activities. We have all sorts of clubs, everything from cooking to coding, um, to exercise clubs. Um, we also have in-person activities throughout the year. Um, and these range from educational experiences like a field trip that is outdoor school at the Oregon coast for our middle schoolers, um, to a, um, we have a bowling excursion coming up where throughout the entire state we'll have local hubs where teachers that live locally there and students come together and parents and get to, get to be together. Um, we had an ice cream social and a pumpkin patch trip this fall. Um, additionally, we have an open house yearly where all students can come. This year it was at Fonzie, and we got to see the Marvel exhibit as well as meet one another and spend some time together. We also have, uh, live in-person prom and graduation for our high school students, which our leadership classes are currently helping plan, which is very exciting. And then, one of the things that I think we're most proud of, um, that sets us apart as a virtual school is that we have engagement advisors assigned to each student and family. Um, and, and this enables us to ensure outreach happens and that student academic and organizational support happens. Um, additionally, this is a check for us to check on all students and families and provide them with the resources that they might need. So we have everything from McKinney-Vento liaison to an MTSS coordinator that can help with interventions as needed. Um, and this has really helped us engage with our families and make sure that they are okay. We are not losing anyone, and we're, um, helping all of the students and families as they need. Um, so our vision for our future going forward is, um, financial and program stability because we have endured a lot of those roller coaster movements that we all have in the last few years, and so our plan is to hold steady. We're in a really good place now. Um, consistent enrollment, maintaining that as a school of choice, we maintain our consistent enrollment. Strategic planning, just like we all do, to make sure that learning is, um, growing and thriving here. We plan to continue to remove barriers to student access if that's providing internet access for students or um, other technology needs or communication needs. We're here for it. And then also just continue our personalized learning plan for all students. All right, so that is most of what you're going to hear from me tonight, um, but I would like to take this opportunity. I know that, um, it was asked that testimony, uh, folks that wanted to testify would write into the chat. I have the folks' names here. Would that be okay? Um, Director Jordan, if they, if they just unmuted and, and spoke?
Yeah, that, that would be fine, Caitlin. Uh, quick question, I guess, uh, on the, the, the career technical education, how do you do that? Is there, is there a brick and mortar? Someplace that you use, uh, get that, or how do you guys do that?
That's a great question. Um, we don't have a brick and mortar school that we use, but we utilize, um, shipping materials to students. And we also utilize program strands that are more doable online. So there, there are, you know, those elements of design and engineering that are happening online as well. Um, and so we've made sure that the strands that we're taking advantage of really drill down into that. And that's an area where we haven't had giant class sizes there, so one of our target goals for next year, right now, we're starting to forecast with our high school students for next year, and we're planning to increase enrollment in those programs.
Okay, and, and another question, I don't know if it's going to, you, you would have covered this or it's somewhere else. What's the typical duration for a, a student to be in, in Evergreen Academy?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, I'm not sure. I know a typical one, art, you know, I was making a slide about enrollment and, um, for a different presentation and I put a roller coaster on it. Um, because just like most schools, we've had quite a fluctuation in the last few years, and one of the things that was different for us is during the height of the pandemic, we doubled in size as a school, and so um, we have fallen a lot in enrollment, but what we have seen is that our students that were with us before are still with us. So, um, we do have a lot of students that have been here since kindergarten and finish through high school. Um, we, I, I'm not sure the exact number. I know that our elementary school is typically on the smaller side, and we gain a lot of students in middle school that do stick with us through high school. Um, you know, we, we hear reports that school safety, uh, is, is a challenge. We hear reports that bullying has been a challenge or anxiety. Um, and that, that's when in secondary school, kids really want to come to us and, and stick with us. Um, and, um, we also have, um, groups of students who are homeschooling with their families, and then when they hit secondary school choose, um, to look at an online option to be able to supplement what families are able to contribute at home. So, um, I don't have the exact number, but I am now, and you piqued my interest.
Yeah, sometime in the future you can provide it. Thank you very much, Caitlin.
No problem. And I can take more questions after our speakers if that's helpful, or I can take them now if that's helpful, if it's right on your mind.
Yeah, I don't hear any questions, so yep. Proceed to the, the parent testimony.
Yeah, Erin Hoover, are you there? I saw you log in a little bit ago. Hi, um, and Erin, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that everybody can see you and you can see everyone if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. There you go. Thank you for being here, Erin. Would you go ahead and introduce yourself and, and you can give whatever testimony your heart desires?
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Erin Hoover. I'm a parent with, um, uh, Evergreen Virtual Academy student. Since I have two daughters, one in, uh, 7th grade and one in 4th grade. And, um, I'm not a great orator, so, um, I've written some, some notes here that I'll read, so. Um, so our family has been with Eva, which was Orva for eight years now, um, and the school has blessed us in many ways. From the beginning, we wanted to educate our children at home. Um, some of our motives included feeling a responsibility to have involvement in our girls' education, um, wanting to shelter them from unwholesome peer influences at a young age, um, and just wanting to keep them physically safe, especially with all of the violence in schools these days, you know, hard for families. Um, Evergreen Virtual Academy has offered our children an excellent education while allowing them to study within the shelter of our home and grow up with our family values. Um, there are many aspects that we appreciate about Eva. I wanted to talk about the comprehensive design of the program. Um, by using many different avenues, Eva provides a well-rounded and comprehensive education. Um, the teacher-led class connect sessions are wonderful. Um, it's great for the kids to learn from someone other than just me. Um, so it allows them to develop independence and take ownership for their education, their learning. Uh, we love the hands-on books and workbooks that are provided for K through 5th grade. Um, it's so important to balance the the screen time for kids and promote actual handwriting, um, with a pencil. Uh, the books and workbooks allow for haptic learning and create a valuable, organic experience. The books and workbooks are an especially attractive feature for Orva. A lot of the online schools don't offer that. Um, I'm sure, um, Eva will find that many parents, um, will find that a draw to their program. In addition to the online curriculum, we appreciate, uh, the access, um, to the extra online resources such as the iXL program and the iReady program, um, which, um, allow for extra practice, um, or an Excel pace if the kids are doing well, if, you know, need to go faster. I hope programs like this continue to be offered throughout all of the grades. Um, I wanted to make special mention of the teachers. We really appreciate the Eva teachers. Um, they genuinely care and provide excellent instruction. Daily, they come into our home with positive energy and they go out of their way to show personal interest in the students. This is motivating for the students. Also, in educating at home, it is important for parents to be able to, as much as possible, avoid a dual relationship, uh, with especially their pre-teens and their teens. Um, so, um, when the students are accountable to an outside teacher, then the parent can be the person in the support role and be the coach, uh, which leads to a better parent-child relationship. And so it's a really great setup for home learning. Um, we appreciate the teachers and advisor availability and support for all of our questions. It seems like they're always available. And they respond, um, and they, they listen to our concerns, which is nice. Um, Eva has really made an effort to provide great support. Um, the new student computers that they've provided this year have been really nice, and we love the new tech support that has been provided starting this year. Eva's made a lot of great changes, and it's obvious that they're committed to providing a really, um, ex excellent, um, experience for the kids. Um, let's see. Uh, Eva's curriculum and support meets our children at their level of need. Uh, and provides plenty of opportunities for academic challenge. Uh, in education, like with most things, the return is equivalent to the effort that you put in and our
Our apologies.
Glad my grandkids aren't on here with me.
Yeah, okay, um, uh, at this time, I, we had a, uh, a student as well that was going to testify, but I do believe that their parents have exited. So I hope it's okay. We're gonna, we're gonna skip that testimony for tonight, um, for right now. Um, and I'll connect with our parent to see if it's possible to, to finish her testimony. We do have a teacher here tonight that I would love to ask if she'd be willing to, to testify. We had pre-scheduled for that to happen, and, um, Tina Lowen is here. pre-scheduled for that to happen, and um Tina Lowen is here. Um, are you feeling feeling okay to do that, Tina?
I'm good.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, I wrote down what I wanted to say um so that you wouldn't have to hear me ramble. My name is Tina Loan, and this is my fifth year teaching at Eva. When asked why I value my experience at Eva, I decided it really came down to my daily classroom experience with the students. I teach middle school language arts, specifically intervention language arts. In my class, students work on mastering the language arts standards as well as work on improving their reading skills. We are providing students reading support while also working on the required standards. But students are not limited to getting that support by relinquishing an elective or spending more required time in class. This is one of the reasons I appreciate teaching at Eva. I've taught language arts in a traditional brick and mortar school as well as the additional reading intervention class. In my experience, that type of scheduling results in many students feeling different from their peers and unmotivated. I appreciate that Eva is making decisions that value student perspectives. And I've experienced how valuing their perspective helps build their confidence and interest in school. During my time with Eva, I have witnessed how an online educational option can make a difference in a student's life. I firmly believe that education is not a one-size-fits-all experience. I have students who thrive because they aren't concerned on a daily basis about being judged by their peers, who appreciate the on the option of engaging in different ways and who benefit from the flexibility of online schooling. They are all students for whom education in a brick and mortar setting simply didn't provide what they needed for academic success. However, they are successful here at our school. Their success is part of the reason that I enjoy teaching at Eva. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Tina.
At this time, um, I do see we have our parent here. Um, I'd like to ask if there are any um questions that um the Board of Directors would like to ask to Eva.
Yeah, what uh just so as Claire, I saw a lot of uh data on your numbers. Currently, most recent count for Eva is?
I believe twelve fifty, right in that range, yeah.
Okay, and and you guys have stabilized at that number.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Caitlin.
Absolutely.
So Caitlin, uh, you were saying about the CTE and shipping materials and such. Is it the same for uh cooking classes and exercise and that type of thing?
There are, um, so for our clubs, there's probably pretty limited um shipping of materials for our clubs. But for various classes, there have been shipping of materials. Um, because we had a mid-year curriculum change, the curriculum materials that prior were used, their old curriculum weren't necessarily applicable. So that change happened in November, so we're still in the process of adopting all of our physical um curriculum that we're going to be and um different regalia and um exercise tools that we're going to be shipping to students over the next year. Um, but our elementary classes really have um had uh a a pretty wonderful shipping that happened for them uh to be able to use. We know that our youngest learners need the most ability to really interact with those materials outside the screen.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's it on the questions.
Okay. Well, thank you so much um to the North Bend School Board and to Superintendent Bogutan for having us tonight. Um, I know that the Eva team feels very proud to be a part of um your school district as well, and um we would, you know, love to further this relationship. So thanks for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you, Caitlin. Okay, so does that complete? I'll assume that completes the uh Eva presentations and the hearing people to speaking. We're ready to move on to Agenda Item Four, Integrated Guidance Update and Public Hearing Action Item.
And so I will uh just kind of go through that tonight. And so there has been just uh conversations that we've had with the board and just feedback on integrated guidance. And you can see that uh we've made a couple changes. Again, the the integrated guidance is really um the whole focus of this is around serving our students and families that have been historically underserved in districts. And so that's the legislation was really written around that. And then you can really see it reflected in the integrated guidance and the questions that are asked. And so um, we made a couple a a couple changes. There was a bullet that we took out kind of on a goal around um some equity, diversity, inclusion specifically. And the only reason that was removed was it was a it was a holdover from our current or previous needs assessment. And it it didn't necessarily come up as like a something that ended up being a a part of our investments. And so with that suggestion, we removed that bullet. Um, but there's been some other, we we kind of explained some topics. There was some recent recommendations around just changing some some question conversations around that and some changes to our answers. But really, they reflect our answers reflect what the Department of Education is asking us to submit. And so my recommendation is to um approve this integrated guidance with um kind of as presented tonight with just a couple minor changes that we've made. And uh we'll submit that. And I think uh again, I think we've put together a good plan that really allowed a lot of voices in. And uh um I'll take some questions from that if there are some. I know we'll have a little bit of chance for some uh public testimony on this as well.
Well, I I had a few questions, but I I think you answered those in our text messages. So thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, I think I um Mary, I did email just kind of a a comment. And again, I feel like um, again, I feel like I I definitely want to respect the 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 questions and conversation and those things. And again, I feel like this uh, you know, again, the Department of Ed is really asking us, it's, you know, I don't remember how long that is, twenty-five pages of questions that we've we've submitted. And again, they're really uh you can kind of see through those questions really pressing on on us really surveying a lot, a group of kids and staff and families that necessarily have always, we haven't done a a great job always. So I'm hoping this plan does move us forward in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board or suggested edits on this document? Okay, silence is agreement. Was there uh, we're gonna hear public testimony then then vote on this?
I believe that would be right. Um.
There are three signed up for public testimony on um integrated guidance. The first one I have is Laura. Would Laura like to speak?
Hi, instead.
Yeah, you're on mute.
Hey, Laura, Laura, you Laura, does it? We don't have a good connection with you. And we can't hear you. Can you mute? Can you mute her?
Yes, I'll I'll mute you for now, Laura. We'll try to come back. We'll go to the next.
Um, my name is Laura.
I put her.
I work with, starting to, just started in this position, and I diverse.
I muted her, but I think everything was delayed. Sorry, Laura. Everything you were saying was delayed. Maybe you can put your comments in the chat? We'll move on to Sammy's testimony for now. Would Sammy like to speak?
Uh, yes, I just had a question about number on page four uh where it talks about student attendance, and it says students are missing more school because of tightened health and safety measures. Um, what is the data on that? Because as far as I can tell, there aren't any tightened health and safety currently.
I think when I I think when we reference that, I think we are seeing still kids um at really the first sign of kind of a cough and sniffles and um are are being sent home or not being sent to school. So we have parents, um you look, our attendance rate has really not returned to some normal levels. And as we contact parents, they're keeping their kids more as precautionary. Um, again, some COVID still repainting, but more, we don't really, we're not necessarily keeping firm data, but we know um just kind of how even in the classroom, kids are experiencing some cough or some things and off to the office they go, and they're much more readily going home than I'd say pre-pandemic. And we had a lot of sniffling, coughing kids. That really doesn't exist to the same level. So that's what we're referencing there, not necessarily any kind of hard and fast necessarily measures.
Okay, that doesn't seem to reflect that in a sense.
Are we ready for the next public speaker? That would be Jamar Ruff.
Hello, my name is Jamar Ruff. My pronouns are he, they. Um, I am the director of the South Coast Equity Coalition, which is a regional health equity coalition um under Oregon Health Authority and the Office of Equity and Inclusion. I read, and I'm also, I live in North Bend, um, and I read through the um through the initiative, and I know that previously y'all opted out of having a line item that says diversity, equity, and inclusion. And um, it's hard to write in or acknowledge the fact that you are trying to uphold and support historical historically marginalized communities without taking advances on diversity, equity, and inclusion to really meet their needs. Um, and I know that it's up, you are wanting to move forward tonight as far as approval, but I think that um it is a misstep. And some of the verbiage also, when you are taking the equity lens to some of the documents that you have created, um, you're using verbiage like all and equal. And when you're taking the equity lens at at this document, there are some um there's some negatives versus positives. So um, and I also think that um if you give yourself time to kind of really look at it and digest the document and make some corrections and some also some spaces for accountability, you know, um I think it would be a really great step in the right direction. And I also want to honor the fact of sometimes saying the word equity comes with some barriers for folks that sometimes make people uncomfortable. But you can't take an equity lens at a document and use verbiage like equal and all, because we use equity because we know that there's not equal access. And the equity of it all is understanding that different people need different things. So I just want to urge, you know, before agreeing to move forward with this or passing it, maybe let's kind of come together um in a collaboration. Um, I work in the community, it's the South Coast Equity Coalition, and see how we can kind of um work. And I was just, I was in the Coos Bay um the Coos Bay School District Strategic Planning Session. And that was a lot of our conversation of like, we know we can't meet, we know we have to move from needing access for all and prioritize the individual prioritizing each student, because their needs are different. But when you have all in some of the verbiage in here, it negates um their needs, you know. So if you are truly wanting to meet the needs of historically marginalized communities, you really have to have that in the language.
Thanks, Jamar.
Right, we're gonna come back around to Laura and see if her connection's a little better. Laura, would you like to try to speak again?
My fingers are crossed, and I'm just not going to turn on my video in case that exceeds the bandwidth. But I really, long story short, I agree with everything that Jamar just said. I really want to be someone, I read through that integrated plan, and I want to raise my hand for that piece about community engagement and making sure that our students' well-being is getting addressed, because some of us who work with those marginalized communities, we know that it's not getting met. And it's popping up for us in spaces where you guys might not see it as often. So let us partner with you in figuring out how we can support specifically like admin and policies to really empower our communities um to be to be more successful. That equity language, like Jamar said, needs to be in there because it means a lot. It is a very coded thing for me coming in. If I'm a student or a parent, and equity language isn't in there, like I'm worried for my queer kids. I'm worried for my youth of color.
Thanks, Lori. Like, Laura, I, you know, I guess I'll just say, we, I know we've made some changes to this, and there's a a few a few different places. And I would say this is, again, a a work in progress, and it's a working doc a document. And I appreciate Jamar, appreciate these these feedback. And um, again, we do definitely have some work to do. And um and I again, I hope you see that there there certainly is these plans, and we're trying to move move this work forward. And again, I think an ongoing partnership we have included in our plan, um this kind of ongoing community engagement. Um, Tracy Lang, I think she's on this call, has helped help with um putting this plan together and is also committed to really reaching out and making sure that we can make this work um you know, work for our kids and families. And so again, I think you can expect to have uh more outreach here in the coming uh coming months and years.
Hey, Kevin. Uh, I didn't realize this was gonna be a public comment work session. Um, I thought we were gonna try to make a motion tonight or get it approved.
It is. Well, the Department of Ed requires uh the public hearing also on the integrated guidance.
Well, well, right, but I didn't realize if they want us to pass it, they integrated guidance want us to pass it, and then the community wants us to edit it.
I, well, I'd say we're not gonna be in, we're not gonna make any more edits. I don't, we're not gonna make any more edits at this time. I would say this is again, a plan, and this process is not gonna go away. Um, so this is a significant amount of money that the state is investing in this work. And so this is Plan Number One in Integrated Guidance. And so this is not gonna go away for this community and for the school board. And so again, I think we hear these comments, and we'll certainly take that under um advisement as we move forward.
And Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, too. I believe that the application period for this to submit this plan um closes March thirty-first. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so really, I mean, again, it's just, it opened on March first, it closes on March thirty-first. And so again, there's just some, there is some limitations to this. And again, I think in terms of even what exactly how we were gonna write this in this plan. And so again, I feel like I know we maybe didn't meet all the needs um across the community, and I hope they understand our sort of their commitment to to trying to do that now and in the future.
Okay, good, good discussion with that. Is there a motion to uh North Bend Integrated Guidance Initiative as uh as provided in the board packet?
I make a motion to uh proceed with this item. Sorry, I'm trying for my motion language um so that we can uh get this to the state by the deadline of March thirty-one.
Okay, so there is a motion to approve the current integrated guidance document that has been reviewed in our board packet uh such that we can achieve a submission by thirty-one March. Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Uh, and I'll restate the motion best I can that we're, you know, to submit the integrated guidance document or approve the the integrated guidance application package we have uh before us and reviewed such that we can submit it by thirty-one March. Uh, all in favor, say aye, and I'll do roll call voting, starting with Mary Schilling.
Aye.
Okay, Michelle Roberts?
Aye.
Steve Ryan?
Aye.
Three, Carol Yardley?
Aye.
Christina Simpson?
Aye.
Julie Feas?
Aye, am I on?
You're on. And Jim Jordan, aye, aye. So that's unanimous, unanimously approved.
Could I just confirm really quick? Who made the first motion? I missed it, sorry.
Mary made the motion and I.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up on the agenda is Item Six, Superintendent Search Discussion. Just bringing, bringing folks up to speed. And this is, Kevin sent the board a email on Friday 10 March. And I'm going to kind of summarize that, that email. And Kevin Bogutin, our current superintendent, was offered to be the next superintendent of the Tom Water School District in Tom Water, Washington. He has tentatively accepted the position and is waiting for a contract proposal. He will continue to serve the students, staff, and families of North Bend through June 30th, 2023. He will provide an official resignation letter in the coming days. And Kevin, congratulations for finding a job. It's, I know it's a bigger school district, it's 6,500 students. And sounds like it's a great opportunity for, for you and your family. And I'd, I'd like to thank you for your, your leadership you demonstrated in the past four years. Being a superintendent is a challenging position and I want, I want to thank you for your years of service here.
I appreciate it.
So. So in, in response to that, Kevin had also offered very graciously to coordinate with Oregon School Board Association, OSBA, to contact Steve Kelly, who does superintendent placements for them to discuss a superintendent search process. Their, OSBA does this, other independent, you know, other contractors provide the service. There was no, you know, this is, it was just a, an offering by Oregon School Board Associations on how they did it. So on Wednesday, the 14th, board leadership met with Steve Kelly. And there was a Zoom meeting. And he went over essentially the, at a high level, the search process options for North Bend. And there's both a permanent and an interim superintendent process. The, the permanent process starts typically in November. And that's for a three-year contract. And then the interim superintendent position or process is for a one-year contract. And so we reviewed these processes and discussed. Typically, the permanent search starts in November. And due to our timeline, we're, we're in mid-March right now. It's recommended we pursue the interim superintendent position. So that was Steve Kelly's recommendation and that was the, the recommendation I had after listening to it also. So in the future, we, the board has some work to do on this. We'll have a decision to make on which search room to utilize. We will also, in terms of the process steps, we'll declare a vacancy in the superintendent position and approve an executive search process calendar and assign a screening committee to that. And we mix, we meet next on April 6th at a regular school board meeting. And we hope to discuss many of those items at that time in a little more detail. With that, is there any more questions on that or any questions?
I, I have a question. Is, is there like an actual pool of candidates that are interested in an interim position?
Great question, Michelle. You know, we have one, one internal candidate. Talking with Steve, he did not reference, he referenced, the pool of candidates this year has been small, generally speaking. So I mean, he does, he does, I can't remember the number, 12 or 15 placements a year. So it's a smaller pool. His search area would include, they search a lot of the western, western states in this. So how many we get, we, we don't know. That's, that's a good question.
Jim, can I just weigh in? Does, there are, there are superintendents typically retired. Evergreen, I don't know if Brian's still on this call, Brian Gardner is one said superintendent who's stepping in to help Evergreen. And so there are examples like Brian Gardner, who was a longtime Central Inn Superintendent. And so there are folks out there that they do kind of ongoing recruiting for, that specifically are looking for interim. And so there is, again, it's kind of one of those unknown things until you start this process. But there typically is some people out there. And again, this isn't, there, there's always the folks looking to golf at Banden and a few other things that would draw, draw some, some folks to this area also potentially.
Kevin, I might interject too that COSA has been attempting to put a pool of interims together for a year or so. They've had that posted, so contacting Krista, she might, might give you, you know, people that have already expressed interest in interims.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, any more comments on Superintendent Search Discussion? Thank you, Kevin, for those.
I would just like to thank Kevin for the service to the Northern School District and congratulate you on your new adventure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. That concludes Item Six. Item Seven, Board.
I have comments.
Okay, go ahead, Julie.
So there was some miscommunication in reference to one of the agenda items for tonight's meeting for the policy BDD. And that policy was not followed by myself or Superintendent Bogutin in regards to the communication. And I sent an email asking for clarification to you and Vice Chair, Co-Vice Chair Christina and Superintendent Bogutin and Secretary Mia. And I, I misdirected that email. And I addressed Mia specifically, when in fact I should have directed and addressed the communication to Kevin per the policy. And so Mia, I do apologize for that, for the miscommunication in addressing you in the email.
I really appreciate your apology, Julie. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Any more board comments?
I just would like to thank Kevin for just how great he's been working with the board. He's really dedicated to, has been dedicated to our families and our students. And I just really appreciate you, Kevin, and I wish nothing but the best for you and your family. So it's been an honor to work alongside you the last several years.
Thank you, Christina. Can I just make a comment on the, the inappropriate interruption? Because on behalf of the school district, I just want to apologize all of our guests that were here. And that we have been known, that's been known to happen occasionally. It has never happened in our district. We've been advised when we did Zoom calls to kind of do, create Zoom. And I know Joe's on this call to really do them as webinars where this becomes, that really is more difficult to have happen. Because we were doing public testimony in this, we did not put those sort of safeguards in place. And of course, on the day that we didn't do that, that happens. And of course, we haven't used a lot of Zoom. And so just blocking people and getting them kicked out of the room just didn't happen in a timely manner. So just sort of on behalf of the school district, I want to apologize to everyone. We will definitely take some safeguards for any future virtual meetings to make sure that that kind of interruption doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Kevin. Well said. With. And with that, I think, next, we have a board meeting, the 6th of April. And prior to that, we have spring break, which is, what is that, the 27th through the 31st of March? Is that correct? Yeah, so that'll be happy days. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting. I want to thank you all for, for joining in and the participation. Okay, guys, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.